We will go ahead and call this meeting to order. If you are able, please rise and say the pledge of allegiance with me.
I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Jason, would you read the school board norms for us?
Yep. The board developed norms are to share and respect varied opinions and speak with a united voice once a decision has been reached, to prudently prioritize resources in a student-centric manner that aligns with the district's strategic plan, to exhibit a mindset of continuous improvement through adequate preparation for meetings and a commitment to board education, to commit to assessing board effectiveness, to ensure high-quality governance for the staff, students, and community of Jamestown.
Thank you very much, Jason. We have nothing under public communication. Are there any conflicts of interest to declare? We'll move on in our agenda to the consent agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
This is Roger. I'll move that we approve the consent agenda.
Thank you for reading the motion.
Jason, seconds.
All right. Any discussion? If you would please unmute your mics, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on into our regular meeting agenda, we have nothing under recognition or correspondence, although I will say congratulations on a job well done on graduation ceremonies during a pandemic exercising social distancing. I don't know if it could have gone any smoother than it did, so well, well done. Moving on to reports, the food service report, is Shelley Mack with us yet?
No, she isn't. And I know that she is here getting ready, so maybe if you want for me to just move on to superintendent's report, and I know that she did provide a written report for you, and if she isn't able to get on, then you'll certainly have that, but...
Let's go ahead with the superintendent's report. Board, any objection with moving on, so then we can maybe allow Shelley to come forward? Okay, great. Dr. Leck?
Thank you. You do have my written report as well. A number of items are covered in action items throughout the agenda. Some of those I'll just touch on briefly. We could certainly talk about them more during my report or during the items on the agenda. The first item I had was the hiring process for the Washington Elementary Principal. As board is aware, May 18th, the board gave action to hire a full-time principal at Washington Elementary, so we posted that position that evening, and we have begun to receive internal and external interest for that. So my thought process is for the interviews, that we would conduct them similarly to every administrator interview that we've done since I've been here, and that interview team is really vital. That helps us give a lot of perspective on the finalists that I bring forward to the board with a recommendation to hire. And so how I've done those in the past is we have an interview team that consists of a teacher, a school board member, a central office administrator, myself, and then elementary principal peers. So I have asked Mrs. Lori Hare to represent Washington Elementary staff. I asked Jennifer Schmidt to appoint a position, and President Schmidt has selected Melissa Gleason to serve on these interview committees. And then I've asked Mr. Delzer and Mrs. Smith, one to represent single-section elementary perspective, and then the other, the multi-section elementary principal perspective.
I can hear him.
Can you not hear me?
We can hear you, yes.
Okay. And so, one other aspect of this that we have done in the past is send out a perspective gathering survey to parents and staff at Washington. We want to do this to make sure that, that the person that we're hiring, you know, is gonna, every position is unique, and we want to make sure that we're looking beyond just the job description. And I think that's one of the reasons this, this whole process is one of the reasons I feel like we've been very effective at hiring administrators in the last six, seven years, is related to ensuring that we get a lot of perspective from people. And so we'll gather all of that perspective. That'll be used to draft interview questions, select finalists, and then my hope is sometime in the week of June 8th through the 12th, we'll do some interviews and bring a recommendation to the board on June 15th. If that isn't possible based on some timing issues or conflicts, I would probably ask for a special board meeting to finalize that person prior to, I think it'd be a little long to wait till July to get that person in place, but, but that would be my plan. And as I referenced in my report as well, and it was referenced in the discussion for the Washington Principal position, we'd be looking at portfolio assignments for the Louis Lamour and Washington Principals, and making sure that the individuals in those two buildings, that we are looking at their portfolio assignments. We're waiting on some of those changes because it really depends on the skill set of the person we hire at Washington. So, so that's something that we're waiting in the wings on, but, but it is a process well in place. I did include a letter for summer programming, summer school playgrounds, and looking at the executive order, I did send out a communication to families that kind of outlined the basics of summer programming, the use of school facilities, that includes the green space and elementary playgrounds. We've had a lot of questions about those, and so we wanted to share that information out. And, you know, I can't say enough about Central Valley Health and how, you know, really, how important that resource has been for the district and how willing they've been to be a sounding board and a resource. And I think, and I think I'm pretty safe to say we might be the only school board in the state of North Dakota that also has an epidemiologist entertainer. So thank you, President Schmidt, for being another resource for us as we try to make the best possible decisions we can make in a, in a pretty unusual time. So, you know, a lot of thanks to Central Valley Health, so they've continued to be a great resource for us. Later on in the agenda, you'll be asked to look at the creation of an ad hoc committee. We've had a lot of discussions in the past, and even before me becoming superintendent on shared facility discussions with, or shared facilities with the University of Jamestown. We have a strong working and planning relationship with the University of Jamestown, and it's, it's really been a longstanding discussion that's been had, and I think we're to the point, there's been some, some conversations in place, and I think we're to the point where we want to bring some topics to the, to the greater board. I think the, the best way to do that, and to continue that, that discussion, is to form an ad hoc committee, and between now and June 15th, we can have some discussion about what might be in place or what might be possible, get feedback from those board representatives, and then bring a report and a recommendation back to the full board on June 15th. Again, that's a tight timeline, but I think it's, it's an important discussion, and, you know, I think it's certainly possible. With the Safe Routes to School...
We can't have screaming like that in this neighborhood.
The board, the board, I think, is pretty aware of the work we've done with Safe Routes to School. There's been two different programs. There's been two different programs that have Safe Routes to School grants that we've received, one to create some more sidewalks around Gustner, the CTC in between track and the high school, and now this one is set to start on June 15th. We had some great pre-construction meetings with Interstate Engineering. I was really happy to learn that the work that'll happen at the middle school will begin around June 15th and should be completed before July. Gives us plenty of time to, to get all of our, all of our planning done for the middle school. And just to remind the board, we're looking at safer alternatives for traffic around James, the Jamestown Middle School. Probably the highest concentration of traffic out of all of our schools happens around GMS, and so the grant increases sightlines for traffic. It provides additional dedicated drop-off spaces. There are some enhanced safety features for students crossing the street on the west side of the building, and then additional sidewalks on the west side if we do a drop-off on the south side. Along with this, there's additional signage that we, that we've been talking about for a period of time around our buildings, and so that's really the focus of the Safe Routes to School grant. Not a significant amount of construction by any means, but I think it will be something that should improve the, the traffic congestion around the Jamestown Middle School, which is something that we've been discussing for an awfully long time. Moving on to ESSER, you might be more familiar with CARES funds. The state's application to that is, is called ESSER, E-F-S-E-R. It's a really open budget. It has a lot of ranges, a, a big, fairly large range of programs that could be utilized with, with this CARES application, and there's really a lot of different ways that you can move with COVID-related purposes. But I will say, once, there, there isn't an opportunity to change the budget once it's approved. That's what we are spending it on, or at least the programs that we're spending it on. So I included an ESSER budget that we created, and it, it kind of focuses on three primary components. That's coordinating long-term closures to provide food service to families during the pandemic, educational technology and systems that build capacity to teach in online blended environment, and then purchase the cleaning supplies and equipment. So you can look more directly at that ESSER budget. That's, it's not a requirement to include a budget. It's, it is a requirement to, to approve the application, those three major areas for us. So just to touch a little bit on each of those components, and, and we talked about food service in the last couple meetings, but I want to talk about it a little bit again, just to make sure that everybody's on the same page. When we did have the long-term closure here to end our fourth quarter this year, there was a requirement, both by the CARES, by receipt of the CARES funds, but also by governor's executive order, that we would maintain staff at their current wage, current hours, and because of that, our food service did take on a pretty substantial personnel cost without receiving reimbursement, because we weren't generating meals, we weren't generating revenue from meals, and really the only revenue that we did generate was providing meals through the food service program, as, as I've given some reports about, you know, an average of about 700, 725 every day, and some of those were pickup, some of those were delivery, and, and actually, the request would have been larger had we not provided that, that service, even though it's important and we certainly want to do that. But that, that was an important revenue stream to lessen the burden, you know, lessen the decline on the food service fund. And what this recommendation is in this budget is to, to get us back to where we typically would be at the beginning of the year, which is about $110,000. The second focus, I think, is pretty obvious of a need, that's purchasing cleaning supplies and equipment to maintain clean sanitized schools. You can see in a couple of different areas that are touched on in the budget there, Clorox 360s, which are about $4,000 apiece, but we have ordered, we're ordering through this, one of those for each facility. It, it's really a pretty effective way to very quickly sanitize a location, and, and we think that's something that we can use beyond just COVID, but I think it'll be something that we could use in the flu season, just in, in general, when we have a lot of people in our facilities, it's a way to quickly decontaminate or disinfect, I should say, our buildings. You see different cleaning supplies in there, cleaning equipment, floor scrubbers, things of that nature. And then the last one is educational technology. I think we can all understand we've had different, different expenses related to that. Some of that might be replacing technology that, that we made available to families. It might be looking, well, it might be paying for video conferencing software. We have to look at future needs, what might happen, you know, should we be looking to move into a one-to-one setting? Those dollars could be used for that. And one thing I neglected to mention too, I wanted to give credit to the Washington PTO. I've been working with Cassie DeBray. One of the expenses in our ESSER budget are bottle filling stations. I think you can see that as you go to a lot of public facilities, asking people not to use the water drinking pumps. And, you know, both when Cassie and I were visiting, thought it would be a good idea to increase the number of bottle filling stations that we have. It's getting to be pretty common for students to bring bottles, drinking bottles, and we don't have a great place to fill all of those in, in each of our buildings, and so we wanted to enhance our facilities that way as well, and those bottle filling stations make a lot of sense to me, again, as a long-term, and I want to give Cassie credit because she's also raised some money, about $4,000 to support this as well. So between the two, ESSER and PTOs, that's around $15,000 that would be devoted to, to bottle filling stations in the district. One thing I wanted to draw your attention, there is an equitable share rule for federal funds like these, so a portion of the funds has to be provided to St. John's Academy and the Ann Carlson Center. We don't get paid in how those are selected. We are dispensary, so to speak. You know, we're the fiscal agent for those. So we don't have approval when you're, when you're approving that budget, you're approving the fact that we're giving, part of those are required to provide, part of those funds to the Ann Carlson Center and St. John's Academy. We include their budget in the narrative portion of that application, but you are not approving those, but it is, but it is included. One item that we have in, in other to discuss our future board meetings, and I think the board should have a discussion related to how you want to continue after this meeting with virtual meeting, if you want to provide an option for one or the other, how do you want to proceed with board meetings? In the past, around the June meeting, we have included an annual assessment report. You are likely already aware, but with the pandemic, DPI canceled the state assessment, and so we won't have a June assessment report for this year because we didn't have any assessment. But I wanted to make you, the board, aware because we do traditionally have that assessment report. And then, just lastly, with board education, I think it'd be my recommendation that we suspend board education until we can meet face-to-face again. I think that board education works better in a face-to-face setting, and I just don't, I'm not sure online venues are the most conducive to that kind of experience. I'm certainly willing to do it if that's the wishes of the board, but that would be my, my recommendation, and we're all proceed unless the board directs differently. But with that, I'd stand for question.
Thank you. Any questions for Dr. Leck? Jason?
I have a silly one, but, so what's the difference between like ESSER funding and ESSA?
So S, ESSER is, is the state's application for the CARES dollars. It's just their acronym. ESSA is, ESSA is the federal law, the act that governs every student's needs, act, and the longstanding since the 60s.
Okay.
They sound alike, but they're different.
Heidi?
With the ESSER funding, could that also be used for, and I realize we want this as a line item because we want to continue with it in our budget, but like the school G and/or training, training for, and professional development for school G, would that be something?
Yeah, when we put in for educational technology, it could be along all of those lines. What our intention to do would be to spend what we traditionally spend in educational technology through, use the ESSER funds for those, and that way we would have a lot more flexibility with our general fund dollars for educational technology to make whatever decision we need to make, and that could be professional development. It could be, like I said, we could decide after our task force, we, we might need a dollars to go one-to-one. Those could all be how we decide to proceed with that, but we want it to be as flexible as possible.
Any other questions? Jason?
Sorry, the water, the water bottle filler is the awesome idea for, and then a shout-out too, to the Jamestown Community Foundation, who is the one providing the supplemental dollars for that. So $15,000, Dr. Leck, do we know about how many that would put per school? What's the layout there?
So great question. So each of the bottle filling stations are about $1,000 apiece, a little bit more than that. Some of them we can install ourselves with the maintenance people that we have, and they're not sure until they take it out, though, if they're going to need additional installation support. They might have to run another line, or, so it's hard to say how many. Some of the, some of our buildings have raised enough money on their own, and they don't need any. Gustner Elementary, for example, has three, and I think those are supported by the PTO. One was supported by a private donor, and so they don't actually need any, any stations, but Washington, for example, doesn't have any. The high school, middle school have some, so kind of the idea is to make sure that everybody has one, and then we'll go based on need to see how far they go, you know, depending on the installation cost. That $15,000 could get us 14, it could get us 11, so we're going to order 10 right now and then see how far that gets us. But I, it's definitely a significant improvement from what we have right now.
Thank you.
And also thank you for clarifying with the Community Foundation, important distinction there.
Any other questions or comments for Dr. Leck regarding his superintendent report? I will say that I am fleet, oh, Heidi?
You mentioned your letter for school facilities, but maybe just for a public and for people that might watch the recording of this later, just maybe walk through a couple of the main points of that, and then also for other activities, just kind of what the process is to, for our buildings and our grounds.
Great question. So, starting today, and I was really happy, you know, I made this comment before that, you know, one of my favorite things to do is to look out my window and it faces the, the middle school green space, and I love watching kids and their families play on that green space. I think it was a really, really wise investment by the district a number of years ago to have that in place. It's been a, it's a wonderful addition to the district, and I love watching our, our students out there during the school year and in the summer. I'm, I'm here in the weekends and I see families out here, you know, throwing baseballs around and whatever. So beginning today, that's open, elementary playgrounds are open. You know, the reality is, is we can't be out there disinfecting and cleaning to the same degree that we can in our own facilities inside. And of course, the virus is different outside, you know, I think we understand that too. But we are asking that people follow those, the social distancing rules that they're bringing, wipes if they, if they, you know, all of those are things that they should be looking to do if they want to use those, those playground facilities to the degree that's practical, is how we'll clean them. That, you know, we aren't going to be cleaning after every time somebody's out there. People should be bringing that stuff for themselves. In terms of summer school, we started summer school, an extended school year. We had Gustner and the middle school, the high school. Some of those are hybrid. At the high school, for example, some of that is going to be hybrid between virtual and, and face-to-face. At the middle school and, and the elementary level, that is going to be face-to-face, so that's happening and starting now. And with summer programming, that's a little bit of a different, a little bit of a different situation, because I, I think all, all the board can understand, there's a really important component that we miss if we don't have summer programming. In a normal year, we're connecting kids to school. Activities play a really crucial role, whether that is band or basketball, and they play important roles in kids' experiences in school and the connection that they have with school, and we want to continue that to the, to the degree practical. But I, I will say that there's rules in place that we're, we're certainly different as a school than other venues are. And so for those that are wishing to use the school, they have to respect and understand that the rules are going to be different in these spaces. We have very clear rules that govern what's going to happen in those buildings, and so if somebody has a request and they would like to use the facilities, in the past, to be honest, our biggest question has been, when do you want it and is it available? Because we recognize the role that, that schools and school facilities have in the community. People look to our, look to us. There's not a lot of gyms around, for example, and so people have an expectation from the school. And so in the past, our biggest concern was, when's it available? And yes, of course you can use it or rent the facility, depending on the situation, but, but now, that's our second question. Our first question is, what are you asking to do? And so they'll write a proposal to our activities directors, depending on what facility they'd like to use, and the activities director walks through that proposal, and then is going to give explicit requirements for each of those. For example, say, are, we want to hold the basketball camp, which is a pretty common event in the summer, and hold the, say Jacoby Lloyd, Coach Lloyd wants to hold the basketball camp. He would have to write a proposal to Mr. Rolson, and he would outline specifically what he wants to do. And in that, if he say, again, I'm just kind of making this up here, but say he wanted to have a one-on-one tournament, you know, as part of this camp. Well, Mr. Rolson would say, well, you're not allowed to do that. That, you know, the close contact doesn't allow for that. We have to keep social distance, and so he would send that back and say, well, here's the feedback I have for you. You can't do this, you can do these things, but you can't do this, or if you're going to do this, these are the things that you need to follow. And so we give them that start restart guidance. We ask them to write the proposal, we approve the proposal. If it's necessary, we would ask Central Valley Health, and they were great, they, they agreed to be a consultant for us. If, if we had, if, if we needed some direction and a little bit of support on where to go on, on one of the requests, we would ask their advice, and they would consult with us and make some suggestions on this particular item. We would ultimately approve it or deny it. We would get that back to them, and then we would set a date and decide when it's available. So a little bit more strict than it has been in the past, but it's just the reality that we're living in right now.
Go ahead, Heidi.
And so I just want to, just in conversations with families and so forth and constituents, the, the executive order for schools is slightly different and a little, maybe a little more, is different than what maybe a private venue.
Or even Park and Rec.
Yeah.
Was that?
Even Park and Rec is different than educational.
Yeah, I, I don't think people are making that definition, so also just want to make sure our public's aware that, from my understanding, and that's backed up by Jennifer there and Dr. Leck, that it just is, we have to go through some processes because we're, the executive order for the schools is different.
Yeah, I appreciate the distinction there, and it's absolutely accurate. We, we are, I guess I couldn't speak if we are the most restrictive, but I think if we aren't, we are one of the most restricted facilities, and those are the rules that we follow, and like, I, I think that's where the proposal aspect is so important, because people do assume, and, you know, this is what we've done in the past, this is the activity we've done in the past, and that's just one of our own accountability measures of how we can make sure that the people that are renting or using the facility understand what our expectations are. It's just one more catch to make sure that we're communicating effectively.
Yes, and that will be important to continue that process moving forward, so that we can keep our facilities where our students will be and where our staff will be as safe and healthy as possible. So keep, keep up the good work. It can be a little bit confusing, especially now as different activities are starting and utilizing different facilities, and there's, may feel like there's a different set of rules. Well, there is a different set of rules, and it's for a specific reason. Probably long-term care facilities are more regulated than a school, but I don't know about anybody else, maybe childcare. All right. Any other, oh, Dr. Leck?
Just one more comment. You know, in the next couple of days, I'm going to be sending out... Just one more comment. You know, in the next a couple of days, I'm gonna be sending out uh a survey. I'm gonna send it specifically to the board, but then we're also gonna send it out to the public. If you, if you're, as a lot of board members are aware. We do have a requirement in even numbered years to do our demographic, long term demographic planning. Uh that is a century code requirement. And so I am uh, over the last couple of days, I've been finalizing that report. Uh and so we'll be sending that out and getting some survey uh perspective through survey. And that will be part of the report that I will bring on June fifteenth uh for approval. Uh in the past, we've done the the perspective gathering after we provided the report. I think I'd like to, I think it makes more sense to do the survey. And get that perspective so you, when you approve that report, you aren't just adding that later. I think it makes more sense to add that that perspective prior to approval. So I'd like to do it that way. Uh this year, but you can expect that in the next couple of days.
Okay, thank you for that. And then I just wanted to make a small comment on the Safe Routes to School grant within your. Um report. That's something that um our community has needed for years. Um and I'm grateful to, because I believe, do believe it was a grant, again with Central Valley Health. Uh great partners to the school district that is going to allow us to make the traffic pattern changes. And some parking changes and signage changes that will um again to uh improve the safety. Of our students and staff. And so I look forward to those changes. Moving on, oh, moving backwards in our agenda, we'll go to the food service report. Shelley Mack, thank you so much for joining us. And congratulations on your retirement with your countdown to your days. We um thank you for your years of service and your guidance. Would you please go ahead and give us some highlights from your report?
Am I unmuted? Can everybody hear me? Okay. Yes, thank you so much. Uh my, will be done on the twentieth and um. I uh. It's definitely with no regrets and just gratitude and especially during this time to be able to. To uh work with food service and feeding our kids. I mean, that's what we do, so. Anyway. The report that you have in front of you is, a lot of it is uh August. Through March eleventh, on the last day that we had kids in our buildings and um. It seems like forever. Long time ago. But um. Starting with the report. Now, let's see. Unpaid student balance, we ended uh with about a thousand. So that, that, that was nice to see. Let's see, um okay, during the hundred and twenty five days that we were serving. Uh students in the buildings. Uh a a nice stat that we saw was um. This year, we were actually feeding fifteen more lunches and ate more breakfasts. So it's always. Nice to do a stat and see that it's going in a positive direction. And we were totaling about nineteen. Hundred meals a day, which also is up a little bit. So that was really exciting for us to see. Fresh fruit and vegetable grant that has been sent in again for next year, so. I'm hoping all five schools are granted that. Our. Local uh farmer, Moser's Forager Farms has moved. They are now closer to Bismarck, so I'm not sure where that program will go. That has been one of my favorite programs. And then probably I'll focus a little more on. What happened at, what happened after um March eleventh. We went into uh very rapid, rapidly. Planning. And um. Did re- did receive a lot of guidance from um the state and federally. Um we actually went in, we uh. Were granted a emergency summer food service program, so that's what we started with. And um. Between March and uh May twenty second, which would have been the last day of school. We actually did uh grab and goes. We did twenty nine thousand five hundred and twenty one meals out to the community. And um. Which. Seems like, okay, twenty nine thousand, we normally do nineteen hundred a day. But the type of feeding that we were doing is so much different. Uh it's, it uh. It's not easier. Um it's a lot easier to plan a meal and put it on a plate than. Um everything have, having to pre- be proportioned and. So it was uh quite a different mode for us. But I, again, um you know, with saying that many meals, you, we did, our reimbursement, I did put in the report, so there is reimbursement. On um. Starting on May twenty sixth, we actually um. Well, prior to that, we were doing feeding at five schools. We had, uh we had qualifications to do. Feedings at five schools and we were doing, using an online program and we were doing deliveries. And so now we are currently um. Starting May twenty sixth through June thirtieth, we are still continuing. But we have moved to the middle school. We, um a lot of our staff decided they weren't gonna come along with us, so we're working with about a quarter of our staff right now. And um seems to be still, uh we just have built, built that momentum from the beginning. So it's just, i- it's flowing really good, even though we have uh. But again, we're in one building too, so. Right now, um. We are. We are down a little bit with numbers, but we are. Um going to be sending meals over to summer schools. We're gonna be feeding kids at the middle school, Gusner Elementary and Washington, so that's gonna really help bring our numbers up. We're gonna get reimbursement for those too, so that, that's actually gonna help sustain what we're doing. We uh, it's been very interesting. Probably one of my biggest fears through this whole, well, it's, my biggest fear is always safe food. On my watch, I don't ever want anyone to get sick. And um so. Switching to a different type of service, um you know, we really had to do a lot of training. And everyone had to remember all their protocols and. And but my number one fear is that's, you know, someone was gonna come down with the virus, you know? And wipe the feeding program out, but everyone um has been, you know, really. Taking this serious and keeping themselves healthy and and letting me know. What their families are looking like and if we need to keep them home. It's been working, it's been working really well. So I'm very proud of of our food service staff for keeping themselves healthy. And um. Dr. Leck talked about our financial, financial situation and. That has really been abnormal. Um because traditionally, you know, we normally um are self sustaining. And we took a big, we took a big hit and it really. A lot of it, I mean, we are reimbursed, yes, but that's only a portion. Um our big reimbursement comes from paid, our paid students. And so when you're not feeding those students, you're not getting that reimbursement and you're not, you know, we're not doing à la carte. So, yeah, we um. We're taking some big hits. We uh, it looks like, you know, with some help from the, the care program. It looks like we're gonna be sitting pretty good. On June, I know June, I've recosted it out with reimbursement and a small amount of staff. I think we're gonna be okay in June, it's just the months prior to that, April and May. So um. Um I think we're gonna be fine to start, to uh start the year. We are. We are, are purchasing, we are keeping our purchasing. Really down to a minimum because we had, we have so much in our freezers. And so we are currently moving food around, trying to keep all our spending. Down. And so, you know, our menu does, that what we are providing does have to be. Um I think we're doing a great job on trying to switch things up, but again. You know, we're, we're not purchasing, we're trying to use up what we have to keep those costs down. So um. Other than that, um wow, it's just like I said, Ben. Uh organized chaos. And uh. Um just uh, like I said, I just am, just really grateful. With no regrets. To leave.
Well, we will certainly miss you and we are very grateful that you were here with us during this time. With all of your years of experience and with your staff and keeping them safe and getting those meals out. Um we understand the financial constraints, but we also understand the, the federal government through the state. Uh aid will, will help us with that, so that um financial state is. Uh to be expected and Dr. Leck had been briefing us about that situation. Um at the last, probably for the last month or more, he's been letting us know. Uh so it, it wasn't a surprise. As we know, the, the cooperation between the school counselors and the principals and our. Um food aid staff, um helping bring up those kiddos that maybe have a, a balance that's getting significant. That program and that policy continues to uh be working well for our district. And I hope it, I hope it stays that way and continues. Um cuz it sounds like, you know, it, it, it made a huge difference. Are there any questions or comments? Heidi?
I'd just like to express our appreciation also um that you've been willing to stay on for a few extra weeks. Just to help with that transition and especially um kind of during these unprecedented times with us doing lunches or, you know, um into June here. We just really appreciate, um you know, you kind of have, have um our school lunch program set up very well. And we appreciate your, your help and making that transition very, very smooth. So thank you.
Jason?
So how many years have you been in food service?
Well, in food service, uh long, long time, but.
I bet you never thought you'd end your career on this note.
Never.
Um remind, remind me though, the, the fruits and veggies program, is that tied with Title One?
No.
Okay.
No, it isn't.
And then the, I just wasn't sure, I couldn't remember. And then the, the collections of the five hundred and seven dollars. Has that rectified itself since this or are we still working on that?
No, it actually, it's been on the books for years.
Oh, okay. So that's not just from this school year?
No.
Okay.
No.
Good enough, thanks.
Any other questions or comments for Shelley? Dr. Leck?
I just wanna make the comment too that, that Shelley's given so much, um you know, so much passion to. To this department and I don't, I, I think it's one of those things when you, when you sit in an office, people don't understand. Uh how much happens and how much of, you know, your heart and soul goes into feeding kids and. Um you know, just wanna recognize Shelley, uh you know, continues to do just a great job and. Always willing to work with families uh that are struggling. Uh you know, with uh, to ensure that we have a, a food, a service program for, for all kids and uh. Just a, a real blessing, somebody that's very easy to work with and just to uh share my appreciation as well, Shelley formerly, very public.
Thank you.
Thank you and enjoy your retirement. Alright, moving on in our agenda, we have nothing under board education. Um we have nothing under old business, so moving into new business, we have nothing under activities, so moving into building and grounds. Can I have a motion to approve the bid of Wrigley Mechanical in the amount of two hundred fifty six thousand eight hundred dollars? For the Lincoln Boiler Project? Motion by Greg?
I'll second Bob.
And of course, uh Bob is seconding the bid to approve the Wrigley Mechanical in the amount of two hundred fifty six thousand eight hundred dollars. For the Lincoln Boiler Project. Is there any discussion? Bob?
Well, maybe Rob was gonna go into, what's the timeline for completion, uh starting on the project and and completion?
Actually, I'll have, I'll have Sally talk, Sally was involved with the, with the bid opening. I was not able to attend that, you know. Sally, I'll kinda turn that over to you.
This is probably the one thing that's positive about COVID is, you know, because contractors, you know, were. Were hungry, you know, last year, if you remember Roosevelt, I don't think there was maybe three bids, I can't remember, there was only two or three. This year, there was six. So there, you know, there was a lot more interest in the project. Um and I think fortunately for the district, this company is, you know, working at, on a boiler and at another site in Jamestown. So they could be aggressively and bid a lot lower. If you see the other companies and their bid, you know, it's, there's a wide range. So um, starting um next week in June, this was a little late. The environmental, the asbestos will be being removed. And then as soon as that is done, you will see the movement, you know, of, you know. Getting the boiler, you know, getting it ready to get that boiler put in. So um they've assured us and Oberon Engineering, you know, Cody from Oberon Engineering. They have done all the work to follow the legal guidelines and get the specs and the engineering and all that, and they've done it, you know, a super job. Um and they have assured that, you know, before the heating season, this will all be done. And if all goes well, um you know, even, you know. Not a time, you know, hopefully not a tight, you know, tight timeframe. So um. But yeah, I wanna commend Cody and, you know, all the people that bid on it and stuff. They did, you know. They did the walkthrough and looked at everything with Jerome. And then, like I said, Monday, May twenty fifth was the bid opening.
Sally, did they give you an approximate finish timeline?
Um September.
Thank you. Bob, did that answer your question?
I was just wondering if it was gonna be done by the time school starts and it sounds like maybe not.
Okay, Steve?
Sorry, I uh talked my question over with myself and answered it also.
Very nice. Um any other questions regarding this motion?
Just, just on that bid tabulation, it says licensed spot and the bond and then add number one. What does that mean?
That's for their license and bonded.
You know, it was, you know, they had. You know, it was, you know, they have to be licensed contractor, you know, so up in the bid, they have to make sure that, you know, they are a licensed contractor.
And for insurance, and then that add number one column.
Addendum number, addendum number one, that they, they approved the addendum number one and knowing that, you know, because of COVID-19, you know, the environmental asbestos will be done a little bit later. So those contractors were made aware of that. And could they, you know, do it in a tighter timeframe, understanding it's going to be, you know, that they're not going to be able to start as soon as, as soon as.
Okay. Thank you.
Dr. Leck?
I just wanted to reiterate what Sally was saying too, that we got a very, very good price. If you even just think a year ago with the Roosevelt Boiler, certainly the difference between having three companies bid and having six and, and the interest in, and, and companies are interested in doing this kind of a project right now. We got a very, very good price.
Yes. Heidi?
Maybe we should just get them all done.
Hey Sally, let's do them all.
I think we would like to.
They, you know, actually we will bring, you know, probably in December because these bidding requirements, everybody fills up. And so they strongly encouraged us to, you know, bring it to the board earlier. So you'll see that a lot earlier, at least that one recommendation, if we're going to do a boiler, you know, Dr. Leck will be bringing it to you a lot earlier because we can get better price, you know, the sooner they can go out for bids and that type of thing. So.
Very, I like that plan that, you know, and even the governor is kind of recommending some of these bigger projects that are taxpayer projects should be capitalized upon at this time. So if we have the ability, let's, let's do that. Heidi, did you have something further to add?
Oh, you know, I, I did say that kind of jokingly because obviously we, the funds are not avail, you know, we don't have the funds available. But on the other hand, the reality is, is I also just want to make sure every, including our public, keeps in mind that our buildings do HVAC is, HVAC work that's needed in all of our buildings is, is a lot. So we want to just keep that in mind.
Quarter of a million dollars and that's a good deal.
And I will say that, you know, as we have some greater discussions with a few other topics, Sally and I have been working on some potential solutions to, for some facilities. So facility, facility needs. So hopefully we have some good news in the next couple of meetings regarding some potential next steps to hopefully clip that peak that we've been talking about for a while.
Any other questions or comments? With that, if you would please unmute your mics, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose same sign. Motion carries. Moving on in our agenda, can I have a motion to, let's see what, can I have a motion to create an ad hoc committee to discuss facilities with the University of Jamestown? And with that, I do want to note that I plan to appoint Bob Toso and Steve Veldkamp to this ad hoc committee, specifically Mr. Toso, because he sits on our finance committee. And so he can look at it from that perspective. And then specifically Mr. Veldkamp, because he has sat on the strategic plan theme committee and the facility planning committee. And I think those perspectives need to really look closely at, at this discussion. So may I have a motion?
Madam President, I would move that we select, or select an ad hoc committee to discuss facilities with the University of Jamestown.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Jason seconds.
Any discussion? Okay. With that, if you would please unmute your mics, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose same sign. Motion carries. Moving on in our agenda to the Safe Routes to School update, we did receive that in the superintendent's report. Dr. Leck, do you have more to add?
I do not, although I'd stand for questions. Something we've been looking forward to for a while. This grant was approved about a year ago and we've been waiting for the timeframe. And the costs, what isn't covered by the grant will be assessed through special assessments by the city. So that will, that will be coming through to us, but I think it's really important work. I think, I can't remember Jennifer, it was, I think it was you that said it earlier. This is a, an area that's been discussed for an awfully long time, the congestion and safety around the middle school. And I'm, I'm happy that we are making some efforts in, in getting some plans in place to address some of those safety concerns related to traffic congestion.
Yes. Any questions for Dr. Leck regarding Safe Routes to School? Well, we look forward to it. Moving on, we have nothing under curriculum assessment instructions. So moving into finance, can I have a motion to approve the IDEA discretionary grant in a, the amount of $15,000? Motion by Bob. And again, for the approval of the IDEA discretionary grant in the amount of $15,000?
Second by Steve.
Any discussion? All, please unmute your mics. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to letter B, can I have a motion to approve the ESSR, which is the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund in the amount of $563,878?
This is Bob. So move.
Diane seconds.
And again, we are motioning for the approval of the ESSR funds in the amount of $563,878. Is there any discussion? I, I did appreciate as I was reading through it, the areas in which it was denoted. This was a predetermined amount to us. Correct, Dr. Leck?
Yes, it's all determined on the foundation or on the Title I formula.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Oh, Dr. Leck?
Maybe just a reiteration too, that we have the equitable services requirement. So some of that $563,000 is not determined by us. That goes directly to St. John's Academy and to Ann Carlson Center. So the budget I provided in my, in my report outlines specifically how much money the school, the public school district receives. That 563 is for all of us.
Thank you for that. Sally?
Yeah, the Title I, adding on to what Rob was stating, the Title I formula was used to disseminate the funds, but it does not, you know, follow Title I rules. So just FYI.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? If you would all please unmute your mics, all those in favor, say aye. Oppose same sign. Motion carries. We have nothing under personnel. So moving into policy and procedures, can I have a motion to approve the second reading of the Extracurricular Transportation IEAF Policy?
This is Roger. I move, we approve the second reading of the Extracurricular Transportation IEAF Policy.
Jason seconds.
Thank you for reading the policy. Any discussion? If you would please unmute your mics, all those in favor, say aye. Oppose same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to letter B, we have a review of updates to the general guidelines for reducing risk of exposure to allergens, FCAAR. Dr. Leck or Sally, do you have any comments on that?
All right. Having a hard time finding my unmute button. No, I don't have any unless there are questions.
Great. Any questions or comments? Okay. Thank you for that. So we'll move on in our agenda. We have nothing under tuition. So moving into other, the future, future board meeting planning. So board with the governor now moving us into green, a lower risk as a state. I do think it is appropriate for us to start meeting in person, but of course we are on school grounds. So we do need to abide by the educational instructions that are given to us from underneath the executive order. So we would have to make sure that we are social distancing. And we would need to make sure that those that attend are also able to social distance. Any questions or comments? Jason?
So would we, even though we are planning to meet face to face, are we still going to offer an online option?
Dr. Leck?
That's really up to the board. I would suggest that you do, at least for the duration, maybe in the next couple of meetings. We don't know. I mean, everybody is at their own individual spot with, with the whole pandemic and, and some don't have any, any concerns about meeting and others do. And I think, I guess it would be my recommendation that you're respectful of all of those and and continue to make that an offer. You know, the other thing that we need to be wary of is we already have a large board. And so if we're having people come to our meetings, we need to be cognizant of how, you know, of staying within, under that limit. I think the, providing it virtually allows the ability to, to best do that. That's just my opinion. And then those board members that would like to attend virtually can do so, or maybe have other conflicts. Are those that are, that are concerned with health or maybe somebody sick? Of course, we don't want somebody that's sick to come to a board meeting. And then of course you have the public component as well, that people could attend that way as well. So I, I guess that would be my recommendation, but, but it's really a board decision.
Thank you. Heidi, did you have something?
I'm just wondering, I know we generally meet in the Thompson room, but just wondering if, considering we may have participants also along with us, would, would it be better to space us out in the gym or another? That's probably the other larger space.
I, I think with the limitations with the number of attendees, I think Thompson is, is still going to be a large, a, a large room to, to host. And we would probably set out individual tables rather than our board tables and you would have your own table, even if we set them up similarly to how we do meet. And then we would have chairs, social distance for, for the gallery to, to come and participate. And I imagine that we would still Zoom. It's just that we would be having a conversation face to face more than you would be having with a screen. But just to make sure that those that are attending via Zoom could still engage in the, in the board discussion.
So you're going to make the president really multitask. Who's in the room and who's out? Okay. I see where we're going with this. Any other comments or discussion? I'm, I'm, I think we can go ahead and shoot for a meeting in person with a Zoom option for our June 15th meeting. Is that amendable to the board? Okay. We'll make it so. Thank you, Dr. Leck. And we will plan to also provide Zoom for our June 15th for sure meeting. Very good. Okay. Oh, and now we have the Talented and Gifted Parent Handbook. Is that for our information or would you like us to approve that, Dr. Leck?
He traditionally has, have approved the handbook, so.
Can I have a motion to approve the Talented and Gifted Parent Handbook for the 2020, 2021 school year?
Maybe I make a motion to approve the Talented and Gifted Hand, Parent Handbook for 2021 school year.
Steve Veldkamp will second.
Any discussion? If you would please unmute your mics, all those in favor, say aye. Oppose same sign. Motion carries. Are there any items for future agenda? If anything were to come up between now and our next meeting, please feel free to email myself or Dr. Leck. Our meetings to be scheduled is we have our next school board meeting, which we will be doing a dual. Will be in person and virtual. Will take place on June 15th at 5:15. So we'll have it on Zoom and at the Thompson Community Room. We also have a Health Insurance Committee meeting on Monday, June 22nd at 3 o'clock. Don't forget to do your monthly superintendent evaluations and also to please click on the adjournment and rate the meeting. And with that, our meeting is done. We're closed. Everybody, beautiful North Dakota heat. Woo-hoo.
Yes. Good night.